I'd like to follow the Smithfield Town Council meeting. On Tuesday, October 7th, 7:00 PM, into open session. I'm gonna do the prayer first and then I have a couple of announcements. Dear Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to work together in harmony and prosperity to continue to the greater good of all residents of the town of Smithfield. I also like for people to stand for a moment of silence. The two longstanding gentlemen that taught in the town of Smithfield for many, many, many years, and one was the former hockey coach, that would be Bob Monacorsi and George Riley. So please stand.
Thank you.
Swat the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Emergency evacuation and health notification. In the event that the town council chambers has to be evacuated, there are two exits, one to the rear of the chamber, you go through that door, the stairwell is to your right and it brings you out to the front of the building. Second exit is to my right or left. That exit over there brings you to the side of the building. In the event of emergency, please do not use the elevator. Ladies room and men's room out the rear door of the chambers, men's room is on the right, the stairs on the left is the ladies' room. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Number five, presentations. First presentation is A, Amanda Tassoni, the 2026 Winter Olympic Women's Hockey Official. Amanda, can you go to the podium, please?
Mr. President.
Mr. Winfield.
Thank you. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you.
So we have to get your title correct, though. Amanda Tassoni, referee-in-chief, American Hockey League, is that correct?
No, I'm the referee-in-chief of the state of Rhode Island.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I was trying to put it all together, but anyway, welcome. And Amanda's gonna be representing her family, town of Smithfield, state of Rhode Island, the United States of America, when she travels to the 2026 Winter Olympics. She's gonna be a women's ice hockey official. The ice hockey officials are selected by the International Ice Hockey Federation from a pool of international and professional officiants, including those from National Hockey Association, AHL International Ice Hockey Federation, and all USA hockey programs. So Amanda, you've been a referee with the American Hockey League since 2020. She was selected with nine other women. And, you know, as they always say, if you don't notice the referee during the game, then, you know, it's a good game, right? And, but, you know, we have played the game, those of us that have played the game, you know, ice hockey is a form of disorderly conduct and we just kinda keep score. So you can imagine that Amanda's workplace is very fast and, you know, also often violent. Decision-making is fast and the banter is just as fast-paced and sometimes sharper than the skates that we wear. I don't know if she got that from her mom or her, the council president, and I know that he wants to take a little credit for that. But, you know, we're just so proud of you and we wish you well during your work trip. And, but like you've already said, take some time, soak it all in.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amanda, just on a side note, Tommy's the one that had all the splinters and I'm the one that saw more rubber than 295. But we all wish you well and hopefully you have a good trip out to Italy and bring back something, that would be great. Pasta, there you go. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item B, a high school golf team and Coach Jim Paretti. Gentlemen, if you would, step up to the podium and introduce yourselves.
Good evening, I'm Troy Stockwell.
I'm Christian Snowman.
I'm Cole Clapford.
John Rinaldi.
Coach.
I'm Coach Paretti, I just wanna say a few things, like to thank the town, of course. But the New England Championships are coming up in a few weeks and both Christian and John have qualified, so they'll be playing, I think, on the 25th of October in Connecticut for the New England Championships.
Oh, great, great.
Congrats, guys. Coach, do they have the, post that on Instagram or something where we can follow them? If you could get that to us so we could follow them?
Yeah, you can follow all high school golf matches now online, keep the scoring. I don't know if it's gonna be the same format as our regular state, because it's a New England event, but if you do some digging, I'm sure you can figure it out.
Thank you.
And Tommy, I know you're a golfer, the last time I saw Tommy golfing on the golf course, he was wearing a hockey helmet.
Say no more, Coach, say no more. But on behalf of the town council, I wanna give you a whole team citations. As a Rhode Island, town of Smithfield extends a heartfelt congratulations to leading to the undefeated 2025 Smithfield High School Boys Golf Team and the winning of the Rhode Island Interskysick League Northern Division Champions dated October 7th, 2025. So thank you very much, guys, good luck.
Congratulations, guys.
Coach, you're gonna have to do the dirty work and pass.
Johnny, wanna do a picture?
Yeah.
And we'll all stand up here. How many times do we do this?
Get that golf ball.
Smithfield has no shortage of athletes, I'll tell you that. Next on the agenda is item C, introduction to new fire chief Derek Keane. Chief, welcome. Chief, we wanted to bring you up so everybody could do the intro, who you are, where you are, and we'll be swearing you in in a couple of weeks. So you wanna give us just a quick, a quick background of yourself?
Sure, so my name is Derek Keane, I'm 44 years old, currently reside in this town for the past 13 years, raising my family, my daughter, eight-year-old Emerson, and my wife Julie, who's a labor delivery nurse at Woman Infants Hospital. I was with the department for 21 years, rising through the ranks to deputy chief, leaving the department in 2023 to fulfill a role at Babson College as their emergency manager. And then town manager, Chief Seltzer, landed this opportunity for him, which opened the vacancy in the fire department as fire chief. So I'm happy, I'm humbled, honored to be here, stand before you as the appointed fire chief, and looking forward to the next 10-plus years in this position, God willing. But again, as, as you all know, we have the best fire department in the state, we provide the best services, not because of me, but because of the men and women that work underneath my commandments. So I'm appreciative and I'm happy to be here.
Love your style.
Thanks, Councilman.
Any questions?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any questions from the council members? Okay, hearing none, you're dismissed.
Sounds good, thank you, appreciate it.
See you in a couple of weeks. Item number six, move the minutes to September 2nd, 2025, executive session meeting held pursuant to the Rhode Island General Laws, 42465A1 personnel to discuss employee pension disability, section 42465A2, potential litigation, section 42465A-5, real estate potential acquisition and lease of real property to be approved and recorded as sealed, I'll entertain a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item B, move the minutes to September 2nd, 2025, open session meeting minutes to be approved and recorded, entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item C, move that the minutes to September 3rd, 2025, work session meeting be approved and recorded, I'll entertain a motion. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item D, move the minutes to September 16th, 2025, work session meeting to be approved and recorded, I'll entertain a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item E, move the minutes to September 16th, 2025, executive session meeting held pursuant to the Rhode Island General Laws, 42465A1 personnel to interview Patrick Sheehan, a possible appointment to town board and commission, to be discussed by the fire chief's terms and conditions of employment, and also section 42465A2, collective bargaining to discuss a memorandum or agreement, modified collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027, between the town of Smithfield and local 1217 of the Labor's International Union of North America, AFL-CIO. Section 42465A2, potential litigation to be approved and recorded and sealed, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve, there's just one correction, the list of who was present, it looks like number Tommy Winfield's name was just accidentally deleted.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item F, move the minutes to September 16th, 2025, open session meetings to be approved and recorded, I'll entertain a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item seven, consider to discuss and act upon the following possible appointments and reappointments. Item A, Economic Development Commission reappointment, the term expiring September of 2026. Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item B, land trust reappointment, two, with the two terms expiring September 2030, entertain a motion.
Move that the town council reappoint Elizabeth Segovis to the land trust with a term expiring September of 2030.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item C, land trust appointment, the term expiring September 2026.
Mr. President, I'm recused.
Recuse yourself, okay.
Move that. So the, the, we have to wait till he leaves?
That was actually item B, that was actually item B.
I was supposed, we were supposed to add both of them in the motion.
Yeah, so the motion that you made was missing, somebody, so it's just, you know.
So just make a motion to, to, the motion was made to appoint Cheryl Ionati.
We didn't make a motion, yes. I made the motion for Elizabeth, but I was supposed to add both.
Yes, a motion needs to be made, right.
So do I rescind the motion? Yeah, could just, I'll amend my motion if that's appropriate, to add Cheryl Ionati to that, Elizabeth Segovis and Cheryl Ionati to the land trust.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Thank you. Item E, conduct a public hearing to consider to discuss the act upon amendments to chapter 50 Code of Ordinances Juvenile Hearing Board sponsored by myself. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone like to testify on item A, the juvenile hearing board?
Item C. Item C, land trust appointment.
Looks like two of them were combined and one was not for some reason.
Okay.
Of the terms.
It's a different term.
All right, we'll, we'll hold up on the public hearing. Item C, land trust, is it the land trust?
Yes.
Yeah. Land trust appointment to term expiring September 2026.
Motion to appoint Patrick Sheehan.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item number E, conduct a public hearing to consider to discuss the act upon amendments to chapter 50 Code of Ordinances entitled Juvenile Hearing Board. I will open up the public hearing. Anyone like to testify on the public hearing?
Hi there, I'm Marcy DiOrio, 12 East Cottage Street. I've served on the juvenile hearing board for the past three years. I've been working, or I've been functioning, I guess, as the coordinator for the hearing board in the interim, probably for about the past year. With that being said, I wanna thank council president Tassoni, members of the town council for their attention to the hearing board. I wanna be sure that we can continue to provide this as a valuable resource to youth and families in our communities. With that being said, I wanna make sure that we continue to have the resources that we do need moving forward with the hearing board. There is a lot of time and attention given to each case. Just to give you an example of that, last year, the city of Providence had 35 cases in total. They hired a full-time coordinator for the hearing board earlier this year, and Smithfield last year had 11 cases. So again, in order for us to operate the hearing board, I wanna make sure that we continue to have resources that we need, so.
We'll give you all the stuff that you need to operate the juvenile hearing board.
Great, and if there's any questions, again, that any members of the town council have.
No, I believe right now we have three folks from Smithfield sitting on that board. And we'll just have to make it a seven-member committee, so we'll have to post it to fill the spots.
There's three and one alternate, so, there's three and one alternate.
Okay.
Right now.
So maybe the alternate will move up to be permanent and then we'll just fill the rest, but we'll work with the chief to get that done and then hopefully in 30 days, the ordinance goes into effect and then you can start meeting.
Okay, great.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, can we just go over why, why this is being changed for the public so they understand? And, and if you wanna just sort of go over why, what resources, like, why do you need the resources you need, meaning were they split with Johnston last time, or like, how was the configuration kind of thing?
Let, let me tell, tell everyone how we got to this place. So there was an issue with the Johnston-Smithfield hearing board. The Johnston folks did not want to have the hearing board anymore, and I sat on the hearing board for seven years, it's a valuable resource, so the kids don't have to go down to court, they can just be heard on the hearing board, and the hearing board gives them things to do in order to make sure that they don't go downtown into the court system, it gives them one shot, one and done. But as far as resources, you can explain the resources.
So I think it's been since the 90s, a local nonprofit has coordinated for the hearing board, so it's a lot, it's case management, so, again, we have to keep, we keep records for a year, confidential, again, juvenile records for a year, we provide support to families, case management, and facilitate, again, the meeting.
Who is doing that and why are they no longer coordinating?
Well, so Tri County is coordinating, there's grant funding for that.
So I'm sorry, I'm not clear what the reason why we need to add a position?
No, we don't need to add any positions. Tri County was handling all the preliminary stuff and the, and the people who took the minutes and did all that stuff, but we'll be doing that ourselves now. The reason why there was an issue with the town of Johnston not wanting to deal with the individuals that were on the hearing board, not to get into people's names or anything like that, and they just threw up their hands and they said to us, would you want to do the hearing board? And we met with the chief and the other chief and the little chief and the big chief, and everybody agreed that we wanted to have the hearing board to keep the kids, Smithfield kids, out of the court system, they have one chance to fly straight, I'll use that word, and then after that, then they go into the court system where, God knows, I mean, we, we, in the seven years I was on that board, we, we did a lot with the kids, and I don't think we had maybe one out of the seven years that we ended up remaining to the court system.
And it also frees up, again, family court.
Yeah, that's good to know, so you're saying you need support staff as far as like minutes goes? Okay, just, I wasn't clear on what you were saying.
For other towns and cities, it's been a barrier not having the case management or coordinator.
Got it.
To kind of follow cases and follow up, make sure sanctions are completed, and it's been a barrier with other towns and cities, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anybody else in the public would like to testify? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion. Have a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Item B, conduct a public hearing to consider to discuss and act upon amendments to chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Animals sponsored by myself, I'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Salisbury, Animal Control.
Good evening, town council, how are you? My name is Bob Salisbury, I'm the animal control officer for Smithfield. It's greatly appreciated that you took your time back in 2023 to amend a lot of our animal control ordinances that were far, far outdated, and these are just a few minor tweaks that need to be corrected in the new town ordinances. Here to answer, any questions you may have.
Any questions of animal control?
Can you give us a summary of what the changes that have been made and why so soon after 2023?
Well, the summary is when we did the 2023 changes, a lot of them came from different municipalities. It was such a fast push to get everything in to the ordinances, to have them updated, to make them as current as possible. There was a few wording changes that needed to be made, and there was also a few summons and citation issues that needed to be made at that point in time, which, over the course of time, the last two years, the ordinance have, have come up in conversation a lot. If people may not know, I'm the instructor for all of Rhode Island when it comes to animal control, and our ordinance has come up a lot in all of my training, and going through them time and time again through trainings, I knew that stuff had to be tweaked to bring them all up to par.
So the reason why we're increasing offenses from $50 to up to $300 is what exactly?
For, for which one, ma'am?
I'm looking at nuisance abatement.
Nuisance abatement, so, so the nuisance abatement, that is going to be a, a dog bite, okay?
Correct, right.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so as far as what, how animal control looks at this, a dog bite is something that's gonna be a fairly egregious act, so there should be a penalty that goes along with it, okay? A $50 fine for a dog bite doesn't equate to the actual act of it happening, okay? If you look at the vicious dog statutes for the state of Rhode Island, any violations of the vicious dog statute start at $550 and go up to $1,000.
Mm-hmm. Just the one thing that I was wondering about in nuisance abatement 126-8D, if a dog growls at, you know, yada, yada, after, or runs after a person, et cetera, is this on public property only, or is this on someone's private property?
That's public property only.
So should that be noted in there, just public property only?
Um, it was.
So should that be clarified? Because if somebody gets bitten on somebody's private property, they look at this, I, I, that was just my, my thought.
Well, as far, as far as E, when it comes to a dog bite?
D.
Okay, yes, so D, D is only on public property, ma'am.
Do you feel it would be good to add those words in that section, just on public property? I don't, to me, it's not assumed, I, I just.
Yes, yes, that, that, that would be good to add that, yes.
Okay, that was just my, my question. Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you.
Do you wanna make that correction?
Sure. I don't know if anyone, do you want, if anyone else has any questions?
No, just tell Anthony so Anthony can mark it down.
Yeah, I can tell, I can, I'll tell you now.
Yeah.
So does the whole ordinance only cover town property? Like, I see some, some places in the ordinance says dog parks and off-leash in public, is that, that's part of this whole?
That, it's, it's for the whole town of Smithfield.
So no private property would be covered in this?
As.
In any cities, right? Like, in any part of this ordinance, it doesn't cover private property at all?
It does, and B, it's, it meant, it mentions private and public.
Because if, if a dog trespasses, it could trespass on either public property being loose or on private property being, being loose, so it does address both throughout all, all the ordinances.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you. So solicitor, 126A-D, just add the word, just clarify that that's on public property, not private property?
Anyone else from the public wanna speak on this? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Bob, thank you for your hard work on getting this all compiled into one place. And councilwoman, if you wanna make that motion to?
Oh, sure. So I would move to adopt the amendments to chapter 126 Code, Code of Ordinances, and says animals with the amendment to section 126, now I lost it, sorry. 126-8D, add the addition of public property to that provision.
Any more discussion on the change? I'll entertain a motion. Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As amended, I'll entertain a motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss the act upon amendments, chapter 321, Court of Ordinances entitled Taxation. I'll open up the public hearing.
Good evening, council members. Chris Celeste.
Chris Celeste, Tax Assessor for the town of Smithfield. Basically going through Chapter 321 with a couple of housekeeping items and also codifying the newly, newly passed state legislation for the paraplegic exemption as well. So there's three things going on here. We've got a veteran's exemption, which has been changed to 10,000 of assessed value locally and in practice locally and statutorily. However, the local code still said 4,000, so we're just going to change that to 10, so everything matches. We're going to add a section for tax credit for persons with paraplegia per the newly passed state legislation, which allows us to do a tax credit. We're going to do 250 to match the disability. And additionally, we have a statutory exemption for the Special Olympics of Rhode Island, who does own a piece of property. They do not have a local ordinance for that. So we're going to add into Chapter 321 a section for the Special Olympics that sort of codifies locally and also puts the exemption just on the property they own now. The state one kind of was vague, so we want to clarify that it's the property they own now.
Okay, any questions, Chris?
The, on the Special Olympics, we have a state enabling act that allows us to enact an ordinance to exempt them from taxes.
That's correct.
Yeah, but we've already been exempting them, is that correct?
That is correct.
So there would be no change to our tax revenue if we adopt this?
Correct. We're just trying to codify something that was statutory. Now it'll be also in our Code of Ordinances as well, the whole clarification.
Any other questions?
Just had a comment. I 100% support the paraplegia. Great idea. I just wanted to mention that I thought it was unfortunate the way the legislation was written in that you have to be an owner, the owner has to be paraplegic. And I know that there are children in town that are paraplegic, so that wouldn't apply to them. So maybe in the future, that can be changed if this is looked at again. Other than that, fabulous idea.
It's pretty standard that you have to be the owner and resident for pretty much every exemption that exists. So, I mean, a person could put their child on as owner, but the child is not paying the taxes. So that's why it's typical that it's just going to be the owner. That's pretty much every exemption that exists everywhere. It's going to be owner and resident to get it.
I understand. It's just the owner, the parent, is paying for the adaptive housing, so if they allow it, maybe we could change it in the future, but just a thought.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute, I'm going to close the public hearing. No one else? I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilwoman?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item D, schedule a public hearing November 4, 2025, to consider and discuss the Act Upon Amendments by Chapter 76 of the Code of Ordinances, Police Department, sponsored by Councilman Ionati. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing nine.
Basically, just so the public is aware, this amendment is basically to make the ordinance regarding the police departments consistent with the town charter. The ordinance is so far out of date, I think it speaks about police constables, which we haven't had, I think, since the 70s or 60s, so this really needs to be updated. Thank you.
Motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item E, schedule a public hearing November 4, 2025, to consider and discuss the Act Upon Amendments to Chapter 118, Code of Ordinances entitled Alcoholic Beverages, sponsored by Councilman Ionati. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
This basically would amend this section to add, this section is our prohibition on the consumption of alcoholic beverages on three areas, beaches, public property, and certain business property. And we would simply add, be adding THC-containing beverages to this current prohibition.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item F, schedule a public hearing November 4, 2025, to consider and discuss the Act Upon Amendments to Code of Ordinances, Chapter 120, entitled THC in Food and Beverages, sponsored by Councilman Ionati. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Do you want to say anything about this one?
Sure. This is a new ordinance, which would prohibit the sale of food or beverages containing THC, except as allowed by Rhode Island law. Currently, THC-infused beverages may be sold by cannabis retailers, liquor stores, and restaurants and bars that have a Rhode Island license for this. And you have to have a Rhode Island license for this sale. The General Assembly has asked the Rhode Island Cannabis Control Commission to study and report back to the General Assembly by next spring recommendations of who should be allowed to sell these beverages and what kind of regulations should be placed. And so this would cover areas that are not regulated by the state. Obviously, if the state allows it, then we would have to allow it. And that's basically it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item G, conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss an Act Upon Approving a One-Day Special Event License for Lake Forest Health and Rehabilitation, Pro-Poke LLC Fall Festival Car Show, 180 Log Room, on the following date, which is Saturday, October 18, 2025, from 11:00 to 3:00. All special event licenses at Lake Forest Health and Rehabilitation LLC is subject to compliance with all state rules and regulations. I'll open up the public hearings.
My name is Rebecca. I'm the office manager at Lake Forest.
Okay, Rebecca, we need your last name, please.
Osha.
Thank you.
We were previously Hebert Health Center. It went through a receivership, which was finalized June 1 of this year. So we're trying to clean up a little bit and become part of the community. And we want to try and, you know, do something nice to introduce the new ownership, the new leadership, and also give the residents something to look forward to before it's too cold to go out.
Great. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Hearing nine, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council? Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item nine, licenses, consider, consider to discuss the Act Upon Approving a New Fatigue Only License for the Breakfast Spot LLC DBA Breakfast Spot, 345 Warman Avenue, U.P., as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, and final approval around Department of Health.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jared Traficanti. My wife Gina Traficanti. I'm a lifelong Smithfield resident. We're in the process of, actually, we're at the tail end of opening this restaurant. As some of you on the council know, I think we may have gotten a little ahead of ourselves, and we're in a little bit of a situation right now. The Department of Health paperwork, we were able to obtain this document that Lynn has right now. The Department of Health is currently running approximately four to eight weeks on inspections. They're extremely short-staffed, and there's no moving up the ladder any quicker. This document says that it's just a change of ownership in a turnkey business, which it basically is. We purchased the business from previous owners at Early Eats, and we took over ownership on October 1. Actually, no, my apologies. September 29, we took ownership. We've done all our due diligence on getting all this paperwork completed for the council and for ourselves to get this business up and running, to meet the deadline for tonight's We're just kind of asking for some type of leniency to allow us to open the doors on a condition, once we finally get this inspection taken care of, we can come back and present to Lynn and get the documentation in all your hands. We are under the assumption, I know in business, the word assumption is not the best word, but we are under the assumption that pending approval tonight, we would be able to open tomorrow. We have thousands of dollars of food prepped. We've done a huge marketing blast that some of you have probably seen on the Smithfield Facebook pages. And we're just kind of at this situation right now with, you know, the council, and we're hoping for some type of leniency around this Department of Health issue. Also, I want to state that the previous owner had his inspection completed in the month of August. So the, you know, the restaurant previously was just inspected less than two months ago. And, you know, with this document saying that it is a turnkey business, you know, we're basically on the hook for two weeks of no business. We've been paying staff to keep them there. So we're just kind of asking for some help on the council right now.
Any questions from the council?
What is a solicitor's opinion?
I have a contact phone number. Sorry to jump in, but I have a contact phone number there that they have been dealing with, and I was thinking maybe I could call and verify tomorrow. I certainly get where they're coming from. I mean, Early Eats was not around very long, and they did get inspected in August based on their license paperwork, so.
Jared, what time are you scheduled to open tomorrow?
6:00 a.m.
Have we ever done it?
Is it legal?
You're going to have to confirm with the Department of Health that it's okay for them to operate, based on that letter.
Yeah, so unfortunately, you're going to have to have, just from my previous experience with, through fire and whatnot. However, we have a, our EMA director has a contact at the Health Department, which we can try to utilize first thing tomorrow morning. And you have his contact information, right? So if we get on that first thing tomorrow morning, and, do they have to come out and do an inspection, or is it just a transfer?
They're calling a transfer on this paperwork, however, they won't be able to go.
Because I think they're going to do an inspection. Correct, yeah. You can't, unfortunately, you can't sell any food without the Department of Health's permission. And it's just the unfortunate, it's the way it is. And if the town lets you do that and something happens to somebody, the town's going to be on a hook for liability. So I think the best-case scenario is that we try to get a temporary, get somebody out there, either temporarily, get it done tomorrow, to try to help you along. Because they would definitely need the health, you can't serve food without a health department license. Just, that's the way, unfortunately, that's the way it is.
So Jared, tomorrow morning, we'll vote tonight pending the Health Department talking to Lynn or the EMA director as far as them sending us an email saying it's okay for you to serve food, and by the time they get there, they get there. It's unfortunate. You know, our hands are tied.
Right.
The state being six, eight weeks out, that's another debacle for people who want to run business. This is the worst state to do business in because of the stuff that's happening downtown. But we apologize for that, but it's not, it's not up to us. Legal counsel says, we can't let you do it, God forbid somebody gets sick and you're not inspected, then we're on the hook.
Is all your food on site, ready to go? Because we can use that with the Health Department, because it's going to spoil for obvious reasons. So we can let them know that, you know, we'll work on it in the morning with Todd, because we do have an in at the Health Department.
Hey, so Ellen, I'm going to close the public hearing. If anybody else has got a question on this.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to pass pending the Health Department's email notification to Lynn and Todd. Any more discussion?
Is a certification different than an inspection?
Well, if they give us, if they give Lynn the okay by email saying that he can open, he can serve.
I just want, I just need clarity.
And that is normally what happens, they don't sign the paperwork, they do the inspection, and they will notify via fax or via email that they went out and everything was a-okay.
Certification is a result of the inspection?
Correct.
Okay, that's my question.
And they might see a free business license as well.
That's fine, thank you.
If we could just try to see if they'll do something on a temporary basis?
They may, they may do it, because they're obviously treating it as a transfer, and it was just inspected. They may get some leniency, and they may say, okay, you can operate.
And explain the whole situation.
Right.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. There's no old business, new business, consider the Act to discuss upon approving uncollectible, uncollectible motor vehicle and tangible tax abatements for the year ending 2013 to 2015, and a tax abatement for the 2025 Treasuries Auction in the amount of $507,520.65. Chris?
Good evening, Council. Chris Celeste, Tax Assessor. Kind of standing in for Finance Director here a bit, but basically what happens is there's a statute of limitations for civil actions generally, and it's 10 years. So basically, these, these items are uncollectible, the motor vehicle and tangible are uncollectible because they're more than 10 years old, and we can't pursue any legal civil action against them, so we write them off. They're, it's old debt, if they haven't paid by now, you're never going to get it anyway, but we can't sue them either, so it's considered to be uncollectible.
So we've been carrying this, Chris?
Yeah, they're from, this is like three years' worth, I believe. You have 14, 13. It's motor vehicle, it's tangible, it's just a huge list of little things that adds up. It's not like there's one big giant. It's just like loads and loads of, you know, $50, $100, $300 bills like that for a old motor vehicle and a treasure auction.
Just to clarify, it's already gone through a legal process with the lawyer we used to try to collect it, correct?
Yes, so now that it's at the 10-year period, they will not pursue it anymore because they can't sue them. So there's, it's, they consider it to be an uncollectible at this point.
What efforts do they make to collect it?
So we use Rossi Law. What they'll do is they usually do a letter campaign, like, three times, and then they'll start to kind of get through to the legal process where they may consider a suit. Depends on the collectability of the client, other things like that. They get information from us as well. If it's a tangible or motor vehicle, we'll provide the information to them. And then they'll proceed with the legal action, if possible. But these are, you know, these are now beyond that. So they've done the letter campaign, we've sent out delinquent notices, we've done all the kind of effort that we could do, and now it's at a point where it's beyond, beyond collectability.
And plus, we don't collect them anymore, anyway.
Yeah, with the motor vehicle, I mean, there's no more motor vehicle, and then the tangible's a little smaller, but it's, the majority of it's motor vehicle. It's just tons and tons of small bills that just slip through. You know, we can't block them at DMV anymore because there's no tax, so there's really not a lot of recourse, there's no recourse really at all that we have on those.
Any other questions, Chris?
A lot of these places are no longer in business. I don't even recognize half of these names.
Yeah, probably not by now. So the last time they were on the roll was 10 years ago.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If they, if they did start legal action, then we wouldn't, they wouldn't be included in this list. So once you start the legal action, they get 20 years. So if they've already proceeded and subpoenaed them and started that whole process, then it adds another 10 more years to it. But that's, they wouldn't be on this list. These are just ones that haven't been pursued legally at this point, beyond the statute of limitations, so we just kind of write, we have to write them off at this point. And again, it's three years' worth, I believe, at least two, maybe three. And then the Treasuries Auction is, we've done this a couple of years in a row now. We do these low-value lands, so they're land that the town put up to tax sale, nobody bought it, the town takes the lien, we sit on it, nobody pays us, years and years go by, fees accrue, to the point that now more money is owed to redeem the property than the value of the property. So we're allowed to do a low-value land auction, and we just auctioned it off to the highest bidder. So we were banning 74,000 of old debt. We did bring in about 26,000, selling all five of the properties we had up this year. We did one last year, but there wasn't, I don't think there was anything outstanding on, they were all zeroed. So this is, this just has to, we have to clear them back to zero, because we sold absolute title to these entities that came and purchased these properties at the auction.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Chris? Hearing nine, I'll entertain a motion. Any more discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item B, consider to discuss the act upon approving tax abatements in the amount of $8,244. Chris?
Still here. Chris Celeste, tax assessor. So these are just, you know, the typical abatements that we get. They're mostly appeals and one was a correction on a freeze account that was incorrectly billed. But the majority of them are just the appeals that come in. We did a revaluation. So we, we get appeals and I, you know, we try to take a look at them and make adjustments if need be and that's, that's what the majority of this list is for.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions, Chris? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Thank you. Item C, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing Public Works to utilize a state master price agreement for the purchase of Roanoke Salt and Mint American Salt LLC at the per-ton price of $72.72 to be paid out of the annual operating budget.
Good evening. Gene Allen, Director of Public Works.
Good evening. Director?
This is our bid for doing the salt for winter operations. It's a couple of years. It's actually a good bid. Next year's bid is actually equal to what we've paid in last year. So we're saving a little bit of money at this point.
Any questions, Director?
Director, I was just curious how many tons per year you... I'm just curious.
It depends on how many times we have to go out.
What's the average these days?
The average, you're probably talking, probably what, around 100? Something around there?
Last year?
Yeah.
Two thousand tons? Two thousand tons?
Yeah.
Wow. That was, that was interesting.
Yeah. Well, I mean, generally speaking, in this area, you'll have 15 sandable storms and five to seven plowable storms. But it's varied considerably over the last decade.
It'll be a bad weather. Get ready.
Thanks, appreciate it.
That's what they said tonight. Thank you. Any, any more questions, Director? Director? No questions? Hearing none?
I was just, at the mail 75 Whipple. I'm just wondering if we can get the better stuff that doesn't wreck the cars. There's a different type of salt. There's nothing, I just, there's two different types.
What was the question? I couldn't hear it.
The, the question was if we could use a different salt that did not have as much of a corrosive nature to it. I believe that salt is not sold in the bulk that we purchase it.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Any more, any more questions, concerns? All in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Consider to discuss the act upon a bid award of ultra-thin bonding-wearing surface services. Director?
This is a maintenance item that we can use on roads that have not deteriorated to a point that you have to completely reconstruct them. And this extends the life of the roads and prevents us from having to spend more money per square yard on those roads. It helps us to save money and make our money go further.
It's just like a bonding agent?
It's like a, it's, it's like what used to be called a Nova chip. It's a, when you do this particular process, it looks like the road has been paved, but it has an emulsifier in it that comes up into, it's about a half inch that it goes down. And it, it extends the life for between eight to 15 years, depending on the type of road that you put it on. And I can do probably three roads for what it would cost to actually overlay one road with a conventional paving.
And this, this comes out of our road maintenance budget?
Yes, the road paving.
The road paving budget?
Yes.
And I had asked you about this earlier this week. We don't pay the whole amount in one year. It's divided up over a series of years, this contract?
Yeah, the language that's in the RFP when we go out, we have to have quantities and estimated quantities just so the contractors have some type of a feel on how much we're going to be spending over the, the life of the contract, so much per year. We estimate roughly $200,000 for this, for this particular treatment per year going over the next few years. But, you know, it's only subject to the amount of money that you allow us to spend. So if we have a year that you don't give us any money, we're not obligated to do anything.
Any other questions, Director? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item E, consider to discuss the act upon a bid award for the street line painting services. Director?
Thank you again. This is a three-year contract. We have an option to renew for one year after. We, the contractor that we had previously, because of all the escalation in prices of their, all the goods, they were not willing to extend the contract. So, you know, we had to go back out to bid and you can see there's a slight increase in the prices, but it's not terrible.
Any discussion? Any questions, Director? I'll entertain a motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item F, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract through TX Share Purchasing Cooperative for the vital statistics of Americans, Inc. at Edison, New Jersey for assessment management of the work order software services in the amount of $15,750 to be paid out of the Public Works Department, Water Department, and Parks Department annual operating budgets.
Thank you. This, if you recall, we do have a very robust GIS system in town that we've built over the last several years that helps us to manage all of the assets that are underneath the purview of the DPW. This, when we started doing that, we were piloting with some other software, which was friendly. We've kind of maxed out what the ability of that software is because of the number of assets and the type of data that we're trying to bring out of tracking our work. So this viatic software does have the ability to sits on top of the GIS platform and in, you know, the foreman who are out in the field will have their laptops or their tablets, actually, and they can pull it up and say, here's the, the work that we're doing. That work, it gets completed, it goes up into our GIS, which is where our asset managers are. But it also is going to track time. How long did it take us to mow this field? How long did it take us to clean this, you know, detention basin and things like that? So at the end of the year, when I go in front of the Budget and Finance Review Board and in front of you people, I can give you some better data to say, here's where we're spending the money. Here's where we can save some money.
We love data.
We love data, yeah. Any more questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Thank you, Director. Item G, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing requests for proposals for high school athletic training on behalf of the school department.
Good evening, council members. Glenn Sigley, Athletic Director for Smithfield Public Schools. I oversee athletics at Gallagher and Smithfield High School. We're just looking to put a bid out for athletic training services. This is my first time in front of the committee, so not exactly sure what information you need from me.
So the athletic trainer, is that for all sports?
Yes. Yeah, that, that would cover. Just to give you a little bit of background, we had one gentleman who had been with us for the last three and a half years and then he went back to school to be a physician's assistant. And he worked hourly, we paid him an hourly rate. The state rate is currently at $55, I believe. And he would work approximately 25 hours a week and he would be at all games for all sports. He'd be there after school for practices and such, even if there wasn't any games that particular, you know, day, evening, whatever. I know that we do currently our budget, this comes out of the athletic department's budget, and our budget was reduced last year. So I don't know if we would have the, the same level of coverage, meaning like at every game and every day after school or like for practice, probably would not, just because we don't have the same funds available. But ideally, that would be what we'd be seeking.
When, when did he leave?
He left just about May, late, late April, early May. And to finish out the school year, I had put out, you know, feelers to different people that I know, different athletic directors, just trying to get someone to fill in like per diem kind of thing. And we did have a couple trainers who, who worked for us just to finish up the spring. And the reality is, in the state of Rhode Island, athletic trainers are very difficult to come by. There are, there just aren't enough of them, primarily because it is not a state requirement like it is in other states. So athletic trainers, after receiving a certification, do not stay in Rhode Island. They flock, they, they go to where the work is, so they'll go to other states.
So, so my question would be, if that guy or lady left in May, why are you coming here in October? So, so like right now, you have no coverage for these kids?
No, we do. We, we're, we've been working like per diem. We're looking for something that's a little bit more permanent, if you will. It's not an actual position, a, a full-time position within the, the school department. That's something that I know at the state level, the people have been, they, they've been going back and forth, trying to make it a, a legal requirement. So to this point, you know, for like, like the fall, we've just, we've had a, a group that, you know, we, we pay on a game-by-game basis. But we'd prefer to have someone, obviously, the, the reality is, there are just, there's just no one out there. It's, it, because again, it's, the, the word that I keep getting is that, you know, it's, it's not a legal requirement like it is in Massachusetts. So athletic trainers just have no interest in working here.
Does it have to be an athletic trainer or can it be a firefighter?
Well, the issue is that there is, only an athletic trainer can issue a, a return-to-play protocol where they can actually, like if, if a, if a player gets injured in an event, in a game, that player's removed to be assessed and, and, you know, get checked out. The only one who can do it is a certified athletic trainer who could say, yes, this individual is cleared to return, to go back into the game or to the contest. So when, when we, and we've had in the past, we've had EMT personnel and in a pinch, when, when Josh, who was our former trainer, you know, over the last few years when he wasn't available, we would have an EMT, but they were extremely limited in, in what they could do. Even, like to give you an example, like we had a basketball player a few years ago who had a history of, of shoulder, his shoulder would pop out if you looked at him wrong. And it was a basketball game and his shoulder came out and mom was there and mom, we, we had the, the EMT. And the EMT said, I'm, I'm not certified to like pop that back in, which is what the mother was requesting. She, because this had happened unfortunately so many times. But again, just to illustrate how, if you're not an athletic trainer, you are extremely limited. So yes, short answer, yes, other people can fill in, different types of medical personnel, but only a certified athletic trainer or an actual physician, a doctor, can allow or grant permission for an athlete to return to play.
Is that state law?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Don't want to speak at all.
This was, this was 25 hours a week?
Roughly, approximately.
So this contractor would replace a contractor that we already had?
Ideally, yeah. I, but, but he's not, he's not going to be, we don't have the funds probably to, to pay the 25 hours that, that the former typically would do. So we're gonna, you know, if, if a bid is awarded, it'll be discussed and, and, you know, that, okay, what are you, for this amount of money, what are you, you know, hours-wise, what, what would you be willing to, to give us?
So, so it's up to, it's up to the school committee as to how much money they're going to give athletic, the athletic department, is that?
Yeah, I mean, that's been established already, yeah.
I would hope they wouldn't pick and choose what sport you're gonna have this athletic trainer. If you go down to 15 hours, there's gonna be other kids that...
Well, unfortunately...
You know what I'm saying?
You know, I know exactly what you're saying. And unfortunately, yes, we would have to go with the, the sports that have, typically have a higher rate of, yeah, it's, it's not good. Yeah, I'm not gonna lie to you, it's not, not good.
Not good. Not good.
So...
We'll see, we'll see what you get from the RFP.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Do we have a motion?
A motion? Second?
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Consider, item H, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing a bid for the annual boiler cleaning services on behalf of the school department. Angelo, you can't clean boilers?
I used to.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Angelo Mancucci, Smithfield Public Schools. Before you is our RFP results for our annual boiler cleaning services. As you may be aware, all our vessels throughout each school are now state-of-the-art, so it's not like the older boilers that we had in the past, so...
Are they all gas or they oil?
Excuse me?
Are they gas and oil or all gas?
They are all gas. The only one that is multi-fuel is the high school boiler.
Any discussions of Father Angelo? I'll entertain a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays, ahs, ahs. Item I, consider to discuss upon authorizing a live stream of the charter review committee meetings. Councilwoman Tapi.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just so the council members are aware, my original intent was to put this on the agenda for discussion, not necessarily any action to see, you know, if there's consensus amongst the members. So bear with me for approximately four minutes so I may make my appeal as to why I put this item on the agenda. So just some context, weeks ago, I made a couple requests to the town manager that the town begin live streaming the charter review commission meetings to the town's established YouTube channel. The channel already livestreams three other town boards. It was agreed that the town would do so starting in September. Unfortunately, just three days before the September CRC meeting, the council was advised that the original agreement had been reversed and that the meetings would not be livestreamed. And as it stands right now, I'm unclear how anyone else feels about this initiative. This is not something that only I would like to see occur. Many constituents have expressed an interest in it as well. The live streaming of CRC meetings specifically is certainly not a new concept. It occurs in many of our neighboring municipalities, including North Smithfield, Barrington, Coventry, Providence, and Little Compton. So what I'm about to go over, I'm sure is obvious to everyone in this room, but I feel it's important to say it anyways. Several key benefits to live streaming public meetings include improvements in transparency, trust in government, accountability, accessibility, and public participation. It can also help strengthen community ties and community connection. Public participation fosters discussion about shared concerns among neighbors and also between constituents and elected officials. It gets people talking to each other, which is what our country sorely needs, especially now more than ever. Accessibility is a big reason because not everyone can attend meetings in general that they would otherwise like to, including myself. Consider those who are sick, disabled, in the military, have a scheduling conflict, and those who are just busy with life. It's actually pretty amazing how many people I come across out in town who tell me that they watch our meetings, either live or when they have time. And I do believe that the council recently received an email from somebody, a 35-year resident in town who also happens to be disabled, that is in favor of this. So I recently livestreamed two of the CRC meetings to my social media page. The school department interviews received 2,500 views. That is a testament to the level of interest in these discussions. Also, the viewership on the town's YouTube channel has grown significantly these past three years. So why charter review? Well, the discussions we have here are about recommending changes to our town's constitution, the most important government, governing body, governing document that we have. This document outlines government structure, powers, and functions... This document outlines government structure, powers, and functions. A small change can certainly have a big impact on how the town is run. Another sounds, another substantial benefit is that it gives council members the ability to further understand how CRC members arrive at their decisions to recommend certain changes. It allows us to observe the fact-finding and decision-making process in action, which give us, gives us confidence that we are making fully informed decisions. In the absence of a full understanding of how and why recommendations come about, council members, and the voters, in fact, if an item makes it to the ballot, may vote in opposition to a proposal that could bring forth positive change to the town, or vice versa. The CRC members put in a lot of unpaid time and effort. This would also help get their message out. Let me remind you that a final report does not tell the whole story, nor does meeting minutes. I have asked the clerk to look into posting the past CRC minutes to Clerk Base. Why? Because the obvious, besides the obvious reason, that they should have already been posted. Conducting historical research offers benefits, including providing context for current events, offering insight to prevent future mistakes, and many more. In closing, livestreaming our public meetings demonstrates that we have nothing to hide. It tells us, it tells the constituents that we value accessibility, public participation, openness, and transparency. It shows that we value an informed citizenry. And an informed citizenry is an empowered citizenry. This is hardly a big ask, so I kindly ask that my colleagues support this beneficial initiative going forward. Mr. President, since this is a discussion item, I, I just would be looking for feedback since I'm unaware of how the rest of the council feels about this.
Anyone?
Can I make a point of clarification? Just, just to clarify, excuse me, the last meeting, the chair made the decision not to video, so I just want to be clear on that. We were gonna video livestream, but there was a complaint received by the council president, myself, and the secretary, so I let the chairman of the committee decide whether he wanted it livestreamed or not, and he said no until, that's why I presented it, obviously, to my report to the council. Something the council has to decide, so there was the intent to do it at that meeting, but when he said no, then I went with his wishes, obviously, until you guys can clear it up.
So how do you determine when you have two conflicting asks or opinions of two equal council members?
I said, as I explained, we were gonna livestream that meeting.
I understand.
But then I had somebody walk into the office from the committee and complain. I know the president got complaints, I know Katie got complaints, that the people that evening were not happy about being livestreamed. And because of that, I had Katie call the chairperson and make the decision of whether or not, in order to not have any controversy, because I think there was people that were gonna make a big deal out of it, so it was best to let the meeting go through, and that's why I turned it over to the town council to decide what you want to do with it. So that was the best decision to make for that night, so there was no controversy.
I wasn't aware of that full explanation, but thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Are you asking for all, because there's 17 or 18 other boards, and you said only three boards are videotaped?
Mm-hmm.
Is that including the town council?
Yes.
Okay, so it's town council.
Planning board, zoning board.
Planning, zoning, okay, which are all, like, legal authorities, correct?
They're, I mean, essentially, the other two are quasi-judicial boards, yeah.
So, are you asking for all 17 or 18 other boards in the town to be videotaped?
No.
So why the charter? Because that's also a, it's not a quasi-legal board.
I, I just explained why.
I'm saying why the charter and not the other boards.
I, I am in favor of livestreaming every single board, but that's not what I'm asking tonight.
I don't think, I think you have to do everyone.
I don't think that's true.
You can't just say, all right, that one, and not do everyone else.
We can certainly do everyone else, that's not up to me.
Well, I don't see why we can't do whatever ones we want. I think the Charter Review Commission, it only meets once every five years to review the charter. It's a, it's a very different type of board.
Well, no, you're picking and choosing.
Excuse me?
You're picking and choosing.
Yeah, well, that's, that's our job, isn't it? I thought that was our job, but.
No, the, the job would be to do every single one.
Well, no, I think the Charter Review Commission.
There's no, that, either we do everything, or we don't.
I'd be, I'd be.
You want transparency, you want good.
I'd be thrilled.
That's what you have to do.
I'd be thrilled to do every single one, but.
Then let's do every single one.
That's fine with me, I mean, but Charter Review, I think especially, you know, they're making, gonna make recommendations that the voters.
Can you read the minutes? Because the minutes are done, she does an absolutely fabulous job on the minutes.
She does, and I, I not only.
So everything is there, it's not, you're not hiding anything, no one's hiding behind anything.
I not only read the minutes, I also attend.
I, I see that, because it's written in there.
I think it's so important.
I read the minutes, because I don't go, so I read the minutes. I think I get a very good idea of what's going on by reading the minutes.
Well, you know, I think that voters are gonna, may have to decide some of these issues if we send them to the ballot. So I think it is a unique, a unique board, and so I think, you know, voters may want to look at the discussion, how it was held, they may want to look back at a tape, they may not want to, you know, just read, read minutes.
Certainly, you can read the minutes of the meetings as well.
Well, I think, you know, people, that's not, you know, sometimes people want to participate, and they can't, because they're elderly, they're disabled. We have this fantastic technology now, why not, why don't we use it?
Why aren't we using it for every single one?
Because no one has ever asked.
I'd be thrilled to do that.
But then that's what it should be. It shouldn't be pick one and then not do the others, it should be every single one.
Well, I think that's subjective, but yeah, I, I.
It's not subjective.
I, I mean, we start with this, and, I mean, because it does come at a cost, so.
So, where do you want to get the money from? What do you want to cut?
It's $150 a meeting, and we don't even need to do that. All someone needs to do is.
Every single.
Excuse me, can I finish, please? All someone needs to do, this is not a town council meeting I'm asking for, all someone needs to do is press a button, and then press a button when it's done. They don't need to be zooming up people when they're up at the podium and things like that, they sit at a table over there, so we could, it's easily trained, the whoever's taking the minutes, so we don't even need to spend $150.
So then we should do every single one?
Again, yes, if you, if you would like, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I mean, many towns do that, Coventry does all their boards, you can look on their YouTube, so.
Oh, don't bring up Coventry.
I know they're going through some things lately, I know, I know what they're going through, but, you know, so I, I, I'm hearing a lot of excitement, but I'm not hearing any reasons why it shouldn't be livestreamed.
So I'm, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, I was thinking about this a lot today, and I actually spoke to every single member on the Charter Review, with the exception of one, I couldn't get in touch with one member throughout this, this week. But, so, love, I love the idea of transparency, I love the idea of being able to listen to the, to the reasoning behind why certain boards make certain decisions. I think for the quasi-judicial boards especially, because these boards get brought to the, to courts, and there's, there needs to be exact transcripts of this, I think that makes sense. The function of the, of this particular board, in my opinion, and based on the opinion of some of the members, actually all, every single member, this is like an information-gathering board, so like, something like the BFRB, which I think is more strenuous discussion regarding actual implementation of things in town, might be worth recording more so than a board like this. And the reason for that is because some of the members feel that the guests that they're interviewing during the information collection, and the questions in which they ask during these interviews, there would be some type of chilling effect on the openness of the discussion, because they fear that there's going to be some type of, I don't know, repercussions, or they can't speak as freely. I mean, that's, that's what some of the members say, and obviously, these boards are not operating in secret, these, anyone can go to these boards and listen to the boards and read the meetings, but I think some of the freeness that comes with discussing contentious issues in the charter might not be there. I don't know if that's the case, that's what the board members say, and I'm speaking on behalf of them. So that was some of the concerns that I got when I spoke to some of the board members. I'm not saying I necessarily adhere to that, but that would be one reason that I would want to consider before we decide whether or not we're taping this. Additionally, sorry, sorry. Additionally, I had one other thing I wanted to add. Oh. You know this, and everybody knows this, it's difficult to get really good volunteers on these boards. I don't want board members to feel like they're being watched, to feel like they're, to be uncomfortable, and have them unable to do their job fully and truly, or possibly not even volunteer anymore at all, especially this particular board. There's a lot of new members, new faces that I personally haven't seen, volunteer for things in town, and I wouldn't want them to feel discouraged because we want to micromanage their, their discussions on the board. That would be my thoughts, I'm not saying one way or the other, how I feel, but those are, that's kind of the pros and cons that I was thinking of as I was debating this with myself.
I cer, I certainly appreciate that. I don't, I, I didn't mention, and I certainly, my intention is not to micromanage at all, to be watching them. We are going to be having a public, the town council's gonna be having a public hearing to vote on their recommendations, to change our town's constitution that's going on the ballot. This is not some willy-nilly, fun, you know, social club. This, this is a very, these are very important issues that could drastically change how the town is run, and I, it's not just about.
Has to go through us first.
I, I understand that, that's what I just said, and I want to be able to have the public watch these if they wish. I, I'm not gonna repeat myself, I already just spoke for four minutes. So it, it, it's a little concerning that there's so much pushback to having a public meeting be a little more public. It, it, it doesn't look good, honestly. I don't know why anyone would feel that.
I'm saying, you can't pick one over the other, so you have to do them all.
Okay, um, well then, let's, I mean, you know, that, I, I have to grasp and astray here, but, so let's start with this one, you know, why would, I, I don't know, I don't see any logical argument why against this, you know, we have residents.
But we're saying we're gonna do them all. So you're not gonna stop at this one, you're gonna say, all right, you want transparency? We're gonna do transparency, we're gonna do every single one.
Yeah, I don't think.
That's not pushback.
I don't think anyone said they're against it, like, I, I never.
The town manager just said, he had complaints by the president, the secretary, and the chair.
No, 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 I didn't complain.
That's what he just said.
No, he didn't.
No.
I got a complaint.
I complained too.
I did not complain.
All right, well, maybe that's what, I heard.
I don't think you listened, I don't think you listened.
Okay, no need to be rude.
I'm not rude, I'm telling you the way it is.
Play the thing back, maybe I heard wrong, if I did, I apologize. Regardless, there have been complaints, and, you know, if the, if there's complaints, I think the board members maybe owe it to the public, you know, to, to say why they don't, to share their concerns. Just a thought, I mean, I mean, we're speaking on behalf of other people, so, you know.
Did you hear from residents that said, I want the Charter Review recorded?
Yeah, absolutely, and then, I've seen people out in public, and they've sent me messages when I was, when I had livestreamed it, and they loved it, so.
That's fine, but do people express a want to watch these videos?
Yeah.
Or did someone say to you, these, the minutes are not sufficient, the agenda being posted is not sufficient, like, I want to be able to listen to this three-hour-long meeting, interviewing?
Why is, why is this so surprising that people would be interested in, in the town meetings?
I don't think it's surprising, I'm wondering if there's an actual want for residents to not see the Spark Notes version in the, in the minutes. That's why the minutes exist. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's a want from residents for that, because all the residents I've spoken to, primarily members of the board, fear that it's going to have a chilling effect on their discussion. So I, I'm trying to weigh, I'm trying to weigh the ben, the benefit of the, the purpose of the board, and the want of the residents.
How, how do I say this? The discussions, like I said, are about change, possibly changing the town charter. So if we don't want those discussions more public, why would we want to vote on these changes based on not wanting to have these more public? I mean, I, I don't think I said that correctly, but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, but then they also, respectfully, I'm not going out to the Charter Review members, I'm very appreciative of their volunteerism, they do all, you know, they've been doing a lot of great work, I've been to the meetings, you know, they want to go to the Valley Breeze, what's the difference? You know, so.
I'm not following, I'm sorry, I'm not following you, what do you mean by that?
They, they were speaking about having the Valley Breeze come in and doing a story on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, that's just as public, so I, it, it's just like I said, it's, it's kind of concerning to me. I understand that might be, you know, new to government, and, and new on the board, and it might be a little nerve-wracking. We all had to get, you know, get used to that. You know, just focus on your goals and, and your message, and prepare and organize, and, you know, it'll be fine, and it's really, you're doing a great thing for the town, if you have good intentions, you know, I don't see what the problem is.
Well, I, I, I think personally, I mean, if we would have did this in the beginning, and people would have known that these were gonna be videotaped and livestreamed, that would have been funny, but now we're, we're on the 40-yard line, and now I got people complaining to me, people complaining to the chief, people complaining, that's the problem. I mean, we're, we're on the 40-yard line, and now people are saying, well, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll resign. Well, listen, that's up to you if you want to resign or not, but that's, that's the issue, that's the issue. We should have did this in the beginning, not on the 40-yard line.
Respect, oof, that's tough to hear, that, that's almost a red flag to me, if you're gonna resign, if, if you're on video, on a public meeting.
Somebody else.
No, 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 I know that, you know, so that's, that's a little concerning to hear, and I understand, an email went out, and, you know, if they have any issues with it, to contact us, I mean, obviously, they've contacted, contacted certain council members, which is fine. Again, I'm not hearing from many of the members, maybe they're hesitant to, you know, be known, that's okay, I understand. I, I don't think this is really a big ask, of all the things we're dealing with in town, I mean, this is so minor, so minor, you know, it's, it's just, it's, you know, we had a resident ask, you know, so I don't, I don't understand what the big problem is.
So what's the process, then? What's this YouTube, what's the $150 that you're referring to? You said it's, that's not a thing, or it is?
I was told that the $150, see how Sharon over there is Manning our YouTube station? Now, Sharon also.
I'm sending it right now.
Oh, that's what I was, well, that's what, I apol.
I don't see, that's again.
That's what I was told, so I apologize, I have.
That's not myself.
Okay, I did not, okay, well.
Myself.
Oh.
You want to add that?
That's nice to me, so thank you for sharing. But now Sharon is, 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 you know, manipulating the video where someone comes up to the podium, she, she changes the view and all of that stuff, but that wouldn't be needed, and we don't even need to pay somebody. Just start recording, and then shut it off when you're done, the person taking the minutes. So do you want to share the process about, I mean, do you want to share, I mean, how, I mean, how difficult can it be to train somebody to do a live YouTube?
I'll always learn these.
You know, either way, people can be trained, and it's, it's not a big ask, and it's not a lot of money, so, and the benefits would certainly outweigh any cons, so.
Dennis?
Good evening. Dennis, why is that 141 Oakley Road? So, let me gather this, the commission meets together to discuss different changes. She says this, he says that, they go back and forth, banter. At the end, don't they come to the council?
Yeah.
Yeah? Don't we have a public hearing then?
Yes.
So why can't they read the minutes? See what they're discussing, come to the meeting that they're gonna come here? Why should they be on camera? Maybe they say something on camera about X, Y, and Z, and their employee says, really, you think that? I mean, it, it, social media, listen, the lady could just go stick the fly ball from some guy's hand, she loses her job, I mean, I don't think we need to go that route. They have the minutes, they're good minutes, they come to this body, public hearing, then they can come out and voice their opinion, give them ample time to find a way if they're disabled and all that. I mean, enough of that, let's move on, this is wasting time.
I disagree, but thank you.
And the mail, 75 Woodbury Road. I have to agree with Tapi on this, we're not.
Excuse me? When, it's Councilwoman Tapi, not Tapi.
I'm, well, I didn't, all right, thank you very much, sir, I used to interact, and I like everybody up here, you and you, John. The.
You don't want to be taken out, do you?
No.
Okay.
So, Mr. Winfield said, Councilwoman Winfield said, read the minutes. I personally have problems reading, I get more out of visual. I personally have problems reading, I get more out of visual. So I believe, seeing we're not in a foreign country, communist country, everything, if we can afford it, I don't know about paying, if we can do it for nothing, that's great. I think everyone should be, I don't think it's a discussion to not have YouTube, I mean, or on video. If I'm home, I'd rather see it than read minutes, for me. I don't see the discussion as a big deal, like councilman Tapi said.
Well, it's on the agenda for discussion only.
Yeah, I know, but I'm for everything being-
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so we'll table it to the next meeting and then put it on for a vote.
Or she wants.
Right?
I mean, I don't know what to say to that, but I don't know why this-
Alright, somebody else? Carrie Lawton, I'm a member of the charter committee, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, I did not come here to speak.
Carrie, where do you live, please?
Oh, Tensbury Street, sorry. I did not come here to speak, I did not, and I do not represent any other member of the charter. We're not trying to hide anything. There's a few, I spoke to Angelica today, I was one of the ones she spoke to. I said to her, "I hear where you're coming from, I really do, but as a member that sits on this committee, we have discussions, we are information gathering, that's all we're doing, we're interviewing people, we're not doing anything, we have not voted on anything other than next week's agenda and our schedule, that's all we've done." So, we're, we're trying, we're not hiding anything, we just, some of us, some discussions, feel that what we say at this point almost needs to be kept to ourselves so that we can gather all our thoughts and gather all the information. And she, her minutes are crazy, the number of pages her minutes are. So she doesn't keep anything from anybody, but you just have to understand, we're trying to just figure out what is going to come to you guys first. So, like you said, and Dennis said, nothing that we vote on is our say, everything is up to you guys, everything. So we're not trying to hide anything, but your approach to this was wrong. The fact that you didn't come to our meeting and discuss this with us first was wrong. And I'm sorry, and no disrespect to you, but I felt that was very disrespectful to us as a committee that you appointed. You came, you made this public before you asked the seven of us what we felt about it. And that's just my personal opinion. And like I said, I do not represent anybody, any other member of the charter committee, it's my own thoughts.
Yeah, I'll just respond, and I do apologize if it came across that I was accusing anyone of hiding things, that's not my intention at all. But you're on a public board, there's no expectation of privacy on a public board.
I understand that.
So you can't, you can't keep things to yourself, as you just stated, so, I mean, I-
We're not keeping them to ourselves. There are members of the committee that, and people that we've interviewed, have said to us, we're not comfortable with the, they feel that they can't ask the questions, or they can't, they can't ask the questions, and then they can't answer the questions because they feel that they're being judged or something, I don't know. You just, I don't know, I just want you to understand, we're not trying to hide anything, we're just information gathering, we're not voting on anything. And like they said, everything that we bring to you is going to be brought to you, you guys are going to decide yes or no. So, I don't know, I just don't feel that it needs to be livestreamed to that point, it's just my opinion. I get where you're coming from as far as, I agree with how we come to decide what we're going to bring to you, that discussion is important, but I, I don't know, I, just so you know, we don't, as a majority, I think we don't love this, just my opinion.
So you're speaking for other members, too?
No, I'm not speaking, I just said it three times. I'm not speaking on behalf of everybody else, I'm speaking on behalf of me. I'm not afraid to speak in public, obviously, because here I stand. So I'm not, it's not me that, I, I don't know. I just think you think that we're trying to pull one over on people, and we're not.
I just said, I just clarified, and I, that's not what I mean at all. If you check my record, I've been, from day one, I want more, you know, public participation, transparency, and this is just another step in that initiative, that's all it is.
Then like Mr. Winfield said, then do everybody.
That's fine, again.
Don't pick on us.
I'm not picking on you. I appreciate your feedback, though, thank you.
So, just my opinion.
Anyone else?
Bobby Nicolopoulos, 26 Deerfield Drive, like the woman before me, I wasn't going to speak, but I understand it's an emotional topic. I want to say I understand the merit that a councilwoman Tapi is bringing this forward, I think it's, she's been going to the meetings, it sounds like she's seeing a lot of critical topics be discussed. Logically, if the minutes are that detailed, I think there's no difference from the streaming. I understand it's a level of elemental privacy, of wanting to be more personable. I think it should just be up to, if the public makes a request to have a certain committee streamed, then we honor it, but you know, it doesn't, it seems like a moot point. I think for those who can't come to the meetings, I've been in the EDC myself, and I will say, even though the minutes are very detailed, there's some things that just can't be picked up in minutes. And honestly, like, the committees do good work, right? They put a lot of effort into what they're doing, right? So I think, you know, if they're serving the public honestly, it just shows merit. So I really don't see anything negative out of streaming, in fact, it actually helps honor the good work that's being done. And you know, so's the amount of energy being put into these meetings, because people don't realize how much time is spent to volunteer, to help assist, so, just want to leave that as my comments. You know, I don't, you know, as somebody from the town, I appreciate the streaming. I actually do use them, and minutes are nice, but I'm busy, and I don't have time to read every single detail in the minutes, and it takes time. Sometimes a stream, you can put it on while multitasking, and that's kind of helpful. So you know, there's that aspect of it, you know, a lot of it is preference, but accessibility to information is a big deal.
So why pick one?
I don't think, my recommendation is make them all available, you know, there's no harm in it, right? You know, if people, people want to have access to seeing them streamed, why not? You know, it's a, you're serving the public, right? So there should be nothing to really conceal. I will caveat it, though, you know, referencing something that was, I was one of, it was in a town hall meeting regarding the purchase of the building on Austin Ave, right? If everything is public, then how do you have some of those more sensitive conversations? There should be an ability to kind of keep certain things.
Have a particular session.
Okay, so that would explain that, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I see no gripe in making them all streamed. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. My main recommendation, what do you guys want to do? You want to put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Yeah.
Give us some time.
You okay with that?
I'm not sure if it needs to be on, if nobody wants it before, then why put it up for a vote?
Well, Anthony, I-
You don't have to, you're not going to act on it, you don't have to act on it tonight.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, if councilwoman Tapi has a request in the future to put it on, or something this council wants to put on, you don't have to vote on it, you can just put it on a future agenda.
Okay.
Mr. President, is the consensus that we don't want to do it for the majority of the council, or just so I understand?
I think with myself, I'd like to talk to a few more other members before I make my decision. I don't know what your feeling is. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with doing them all, I don't think we should pick and choose. That doesn't look good.
Yeah, I think we should discuss logistics on how they get posted, it sounds like it's a little more complicated than by push-button. So I think like, we can discuss logistics, talk to some of the members, talk to other members of other boards to see if their thoughts and feelings on this, and then maybe put it back on for a discussion and see where everybody's at.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go, put it back on for discussion, since we're going to try to get some feedback from the members of the committee, from the public, and see where we go from there. But I would just like to say that, you know, I've been to, I haven't been to all of the meetings, but the discussions are just outstanding. These are just outstanding individuals that are on this charter review commission, and I just want to say how, you know, very proud I am of having them on this commission. I'd like everybody to be able to see it, so.
Want to make sure they stay volunteering in town, though, too.
Oh, absolutely, these are, they're just excellent, excellent individuals.
Alright, great. Item number 12, public comment.
No, no, Jay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jay. Consider to act upon rescinding the request for proposal for exterior restoration and painting of the town hall and Department of Public Works.
Well, councilmembers, this came in very high compared to what we had budgeted for and what we thought it was going to come in, so we're going to rescind the RFP for now, and we'll look at it in the next budget session.
Chief, let me ask you a question, did they both go together?
No, they were, they were priced separately, and it was still very high.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
On a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Ayes, haves, have it. Number 12, public comment, anyone like to come up for public comment?
Hello, everyone, my name's Stephen Landy, I live at 15 Swan Road. One comment that I was going to do tonight, but first thing I want to say is I want to say congratulations to that Smithfield High Golf team that I once played on many years ago, back when we had Hawson Buggy in this town. We didn't win the championship like they did, but I went on and had a career in golf. I am a retired life member of the Professional Golfers Association of America. I am happy to guide any of these young men if they decide to want to have a career in the golf industry, just let them know they can, they can look me up. But the real reason why I'm here, and the town manager I'm sure is, you know, probably pulling his hair out, it's the issue with the pickleball courts at Willow Field. In the history of this town, and I have been here my whole 68 years, we have never catered to people who live and abut a public park like we are catering to the folks at Willow. Now, I understand pickleball, that noise can be a little more annoying, but is it any more annoying than batting cages, basketball courts, that the people over on Wampum, Indian Run Trail, that lower part of the park, the people who have to deal with the 500 cars, I think I went through there on Saturday, it had to be five, they have to deal with the traffic going through there. There's a police presence on Willow Road, I grew up on Bond Street, there was a cop on Bond Street and a cop at Lower Willow Road this morning when I went to go play pickleball. And the folks at, on Wampum Trail, they're dealing with 500 cars, so they can't get a police presence there to monitor the traffic going in and out. Why are we treating the people at Willow any different than we do the people around Deerfield Park, or the people around Woodville? For years and years and years, when people complained about noise, we pointed out the noise ordinance, which is 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You live on a public park, you're abut a public park, you have to deal with that noise. If it was beyond that, you called the police department, they came and took care of it. It was before 7:00 in the morning, call the cops, after 9:00 at night, you call the police department. We've put up sound barriers, great, I get it, pickleball noise can be a little bit more annoying than maybe tennis, basketball noise is very annoying, ask the people on Wampum Trail. I have two good friends on Wampum, they both complain about the basketball courts. They don't complain to you anymore, because 10 years ago, we told them, "Go pound sand, you live abutting a public park, you deal with the noise." That's what we told them, that's what we've told everybody in this town since 1968, when we put the ball field in, the football field in next to the high school, okay? Why are we doing something for five or six people who live on Sutton Street, their property abuts Willow Park, okay? Put up the sound barriers, great, but don't penalize the people that are going there to play. There's 498, as of when I looked at it this afternoon, people on Team Reach. Team Reach is our little communication app, so we don't have to text out, you know, send millions of texts. It's a communication app for people who play pickleball. Of those 498, how many of them you think are Smithfield residents? Half? Half? Okay? So there's Smithfield residents that are down there playing pickleball, way more than there are that live abutting Willow Park. So why are we getting treated that we have to play softball starting Saturday, I just got the text, the email you sent to Lucille, that we have to play silent pickleballs? They suck, it's not even a real game, it changes the game of pickleball, okay? And why are we getting hurt? Would these people live, they bought property against the town park, and the people over at Deerfield, those people bought property against private property, was owned by the old Smithfield Chemical Company, the town acquired that property, we remediated it because of the old fire that we had at the Smithfield Chemical Plant, and we turned it into a town park. And all of a sudden, people went from being next to private property to being next to a park, and they had noise, and they had nuisance issues, and they have traffic issues, and what did the town say? Sorry, the noise ordinance is 7:00 to 9:00, we do nothing about it, and those people got used to it. So yeah, you don't get complaints anymore from people up on Wampum Trail anymore, because 10 years ago, the town basically told them, "Go pound sand, we're not going to do anything because it falls within our noise ordinance." Yeah, I get it, a pickleball pop, 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 it can be a nuisance. Nuisance noise is different for Mr. Winfield than it is for me, Mr. Tisoni. You know, I might think somebody playing their music is a nuisance, I might think a tennis pop is a nuisance. Pickleball, to some people, it's a nuisance. There's other people who, there's a woman who lives on Willow Road, she loves that the courts are there, and she goes down there and plays pickleball with her kids. She's not complaining to you, but you're not going to hear a compliment from her either, because the silent majority doesn't. But there's a lot of people in this town that are playing pickleball down there, and there's a lot of people from out of town who are going to the A&amp;W after pickleball, they're going to Panera Bread, they're going to Dunkin' Donuts, they're going to Dunkin' Donuts before they even get there. And these are all people that are my age, professional people, retired people, okay? And we're treating them like 12-year-olds, telling them they got to play a silent pickleball? And if they're not, now we were told if they don't play the silent pickleball, we're going to ask them to leave. Go ask somebody who lives in this town to leave the pickleball court, see what kind of results you get. They're taxpayers in this town, too, and you're going to tell them they can't play pickleball because they're not playing a quiet ball? I get it, you're getting a lot of pushback from those folks. You did 10 years ago, too, from Deerfield, it was worse. They had a, they had a petition, was signed by like 200 people, but what did the town do? The noise ordinance is 7:00 to 9:00. Before 7:00, after 9:00, call the police department. Please tell me why we're doing all of this for the folks at Willow? Why is it so different than it is anywhere else?
Want my answer?
Yes, sir.
So first of all, it's extremely annoying, I've been there, I've listened to it, the police chief's been there, he's listened to it.
Have you been to anybody on Wampum Trail, been in their backyard and listened to the noise from the batting cages?
I have nothing to do, I was a fire chief for 13 years, and I had nothing to do with that. I inherited this problem because it was thrown in my lap, okay? And I've spoken to Lucille and Jim, I've met with them twice, and I told, "We need to come to a compromise, and we need to do what's fair to the pickleball players and what's fair to the neighbors over there."
Correct, I agree.
So you have four and a half hours a day to play pickleball with your, with the standard balls, you've got about the same amount of time to use the quiet balls. And there's some engineered quiet balls, and I've been paying for these, for you people to try out, that will work, there's a new one coming out, I paid 30 bucks for, it's for you guys to try out and come up. I don't care what the compromise is, I've asked Lucille and Jim, "Give me a solution to this problem." There's court cases all over the country, I do not want to see this town get into a court case because of pickleball plan. When, and I've also put in my email that we're going to find a permanent solution to this, whether we're going to put 20-foot walls up over there, whatever's going to happen, but right now, we have to do what's best for the pickleball players and what's best for the neighbors. Nobody's being singled out, because if I singled out, I would just tell the neighbors, "Forget about it, I don't care what you want, you're going to have to listen to this all day long." On the other hand- On the other hand--
That's what the town's done in the past.
This isn't the past.
This is what the town has--
I'm not the past, okay?
So, tell me something--
Steve, let him finish.
I'm not the past. I work with everybody. I work with the neighbors, I'm working with you people, and I'm trying to come up with a solution that will, as best as possible, will suffice for everybody involved. So right now, people need to work with me to help me make this happen. And there's a lot of complaints about it, I get it, it's extremely annoying, I would not be happy if that was in my backyard, and you probably wouldn't be happy either, because it's very annoying when you're on the outside listening to this.
No, you're absolutely right. I--
So, all I'm asking--
And I would be complaining, too, but the thing is, is that all the people in the past, in the history of this town, that have complained about noise--
What did I just tell you?
You water up against the park.
I'm not from the past, I work differently than the people in the past. I'm trying to come up with a resolution that works for everybody. And all I'm asking right now is take half the day, you've got four and a half hours to play your pickleball, and you've got other time that if you want to practice with something that, that isn't as loud, that is more tolerable, then that's all I'm looking for, until we can come up with a final solution. I think that's being fair to both sides of this concern here. And the people in the neighborhood want to work with you guys. Nobody's against the pickleball players, but this is new, this just happened. And to have this thrown into their backyards, I understand where they're coming from, so I'm trying to find--
Well, I mean, I'm not, what I'm saying is, that why are we doing it different than we've ever done it in the past? Because those people that are on Wampum Trail and Indian Run Trail, they have a legitimate noise issue there also.
They're welcome to bring their noise issue forward.
Because the town told them 10 years ago, "Too bad, you live against a public park."
Sir, I'm going to tell you the same thing over again. This is not 10 years ago. I operate, working with everybody, I try to treat everybody fairly. That's what I'm trying to do here. So it's not fair to say you can use the noisy balls all day long when the people have to put up with it. I'm splitting the time, so you can each have some, the people in the neighborhood can have some quiet time, and you guys can use your standard pickleballs for almost five hours a day. Seven days a week.
So do we tell the Little League they need to use rubber bats now with the batting cages? I mean, where does it stop? You know what I mean?
Listen, I'm dealing with the problem at hand.
Trying to explain that we're trying to get to the middle ground here.
Right.
Agreed. I agree 100%.
If we can get to the middle ground, we're in good shape. If we can't get to the middle ground, then decisions are going to have to be made. Whether we close the courts and move them to another location--
The conversation you and I had before the meeting tonight, I agree with you 100%. Okay? About have the pickleball courts over at Deerfield, because those people are used to the noise. They're used to the noise over there. And moving the tennis to where the, down to Willow.
I would totally agree with you. If they weren't there, it wouldn't be a problem.
Because they're used to the noise.
Yeah.
And the reason why they're used to the noise is because of what they were told when the park opened up.
When you guys are playing pickleball over there, I don't think any one of us got a complaint at Deerfield Bar.
Correct.
I think any one of us--
My friends who live on Wampum Trail said the basketball courts make more noise than the pickleball courts.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're saying.
So bear with us, let's see if we can get to the middle ground. If we can't get to the middle ground, then the council's going to have to make decisions what we're going to do with the, with the pickleball courts at Willow, and the tennis courts at Deerfield Bar.
Yeah, like I said, the conversation we had before the meeting, I agree with you 100% on that. You wouldn't have had an issue if the pickleball courts were--
We've never had an issue before when you guys are playing there.
But what I'm saying, and my whole thing is, is just, why are they treated different than we've treated other people?
Nobody's treating, I'm taking these steps to be fair to everybody in the neighborhood, and to be fair to you as a pickleball player. So what, what, tell me what else, what should I do if I don't do that? I'm trying to find the middle ground so you can enjoy the sport and the neighbors can have the quiet time, because unfortunately, we're at the time of the year, if we try to do some major mitigation of the acoustics over there, we're coming into the winter months where you can't get that stuff done. And if this were June, might be a little bit different.
I agree with you 100%.
So I'm just trying to find the middle ground, as the president says, to get us through where we're at now, to find a permanent solution, and it may be moving it. I don't know what the answer is.
And I'm fine with you moving it, you know what I mean? That's, like I said, it's not, not the reason why I came up here. The reason why I came up here is because I just wanted to see that Willow gets told the same thing that we told the people at Deerfield, and the people at Whipple years ago. And that doesn't seem to happen, but--
Well, I don't think you can say anyone's being treated any different than anybody else, because that's not the way he operates, that's not the way I--
And I know you a long time, John, I know that.
I don't think the other council people, you know, we want to do what's best for both sides. Now, whether it is to move it, not to move it, maybe build it at another location if we can get a bigger grant. I'm not sure, but we want to make sure that you have your recreation and they have their peace.
Right. Like I said, there's a bunch of old people down there, too, and we're looking forward, you know, trying to stay active. It's all, it's all retired folks down there in the morning.
I think we're all in agreement on that, but--
Yeah.
I'm not going to retire if I have to--
You'll be playing pickle, you'll be playing pickleball with me, Tom, but--
But we'll get to middle ground.
We know your golf game stinks.